Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cell phones. Be advised that our proceedings tonight are being recorded. For those of you who are physically present in our chambers tonight, welcome to you. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They're available at the front entrance. And then, once you've completed that, present it to our city clerk. Speakers that are physically present and those that are participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time. And each person who's requested to speak will be given three minutes speaking time. Our city clerk will now make a Zoom broadcasting announcement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As of June 15th, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing 1-669-900-9128. Enter meeting ID 83535323567 and password number 612653. You will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you for doing your part preventing the spread of COVID-19.
Thank you. At this time, I will call to order the City of Grand Terrace City Council. And City Council is the housing authority. A meeting for January 25th, 2022. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry about that. All right. Before we get to our roll call, we have an invocation tonight that will be offered by Pastor Tim Miller of the Heritage Baptist Church. And then, our council member Sylvia Robles will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this time tonight. We thank you for the opportunity we have to join together as a community. Praying that this time would be beneficial, Lord, and that you would just knit our hearts together. Pray that you would be with the leadership. Pray that you'd be with those of us in the community. Pray, Lord, there'd be a heart of harmony. And we, Lord, we are very thankful to even celebrate this time of recognition for the Grand Terrace Lady Titans. It's a very special evening. Lord, and we're just praying that you'd just be with the speakers and please be with those who are presenting. And we ask that you would just bless the meeting and that you'd give wisdom and discernment and that you would have a part in the city's growth. Thank you, Lord. We love you. Praise in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Miller. Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Councilmember Robles?
I'm also here.
Mayor McNebo?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hussey is absent. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Do we have any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda this evening?
No additions or deletions.
Thank you. So we have a couple of special presentations, a couple of groups for special presentations tonight. And this is always so wonderful to recognize our youth that are stars in our community. So we're going to start with the first group, and that's certificates of recognition to the Grand Terrace Lady Titans Cheer. And we will be starting with the Lady Titans Mascots and Junior Peewee Cheer. We have certificates of recognition that I will read in a moment. But I would like first to call forward Coach Contreras and Coach Stanfield. If you would please tell us about these wonderful young ladies and why, what they've done in their accomplishments to allow us to celebrate them tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Cecilia Contreras, and I am the cheer coordinator for the Grand Terrace Titans Junior All-American Football and Cheer. Our board president and commissioner wished they could be here tonight but weren't feeling well, so they send their regards. But with me tonight, I have our vice president, Leticia Jackson, our assistant cheer coordinator, Alicia Lewis, our coaches, Rashia Stanfield, Liz Serrano, Maria Estrada, and Alyssa Diaz. We also had two trainers with us this season, Jalen Diaz and Mia Juarez. They are Grand Terrace High School students who grew up in our program and came back to volunteer and assist us with the cheer teams. First, we would like to say thank you for taking the time to recognize the hard work that these girls have put through in this last season. With the current pandemic we are in, we weren't able to have a season in 2020. But luckily, with all the hard work that our board members and volunteers have done this last year, we were able to come back in 2021 and have the opportunity to let these girls come and show their spirit. We began practicing in July and continued through November. These girls showed their support every Saturday for 10-plus weekends at the football games and showed their spirit during their halftime routines. On November 7th, our cheerleaders participated in the 2021 Southern California Junior All-American Cheer Competition at the Inland Empire 66ers Stadium in San Bernardino. There was a total of 18 chapters and over 800 girls that participated in this event. Each one of our teams practiced hard for six weeks prior to this day, and it showed, and we are extremely proud of them. They competed against girls their age and similar squad size. I am happy to say that our junior micro team placed second, the micro team placed first, and the junior peewee team placed first, and our midget team placed third. So with that, I will go ahead and go a little bit about our mascots, who are our five- and six-year-olds. I was lucky enough to be their coach this year, and every practice was a unique experience. As mascots, they don't compete, but they get to perform. This gives them the opportunity to be able to learn a cheer and a routine and perform in front of a large audience and prepares them to move up as a cheer as they get older.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much. What I'm going to do is I'm going to let you know what their certificates say. And then, I'm going to ask my council colleagues to join me here, and I'm going to ask coaches if you'll come up. And what we'll do is we'll have you read the names of the young ladies. They'll come up. We'll do a fist bump, so we're safe. But they're also going to get a City of Grand Terrace Seal lapel pin that they can wear at school or anywhere else. And then, that way, when people say, "Well, why are you wearing that?", you can say, "Well, this is the city that I live in, and they recognized me for..." And then, they can brag on the accomplishments they have, so... For our mascots, the certificate says, "For your performance and participation at the 2021 Junior All-American Football Southern California Cheer Competition held on November 7th, 2021, congratulations on your achievement, presented this 25th day of January 2022, and it's signed by the entire council." We also have for Junior Peewee, which is for achieving first place in the Junior Peewee at the 2021 Junior All-American Football Southern California Cheer Competition held on November 7th, 2021, congratulations on your achievement, presented this day, signed by all the council members. For the midgets, we have for achieving third place in midgets at the 2021 Junior All-American Football Southern California Cheer Competition held on November 7th, 2021, congratulations on your achievement, again, presented this day and signed by all the council. We also have for achieving second place in the Junior Micro at the 2021 Junior All-American Football Southern California Cheer Competition held on November 7th, 2021, congratulations on your achievement, presented this day, signed by the council. And so, now that I've read all of those, you could practically say this last one with me, can't you? This one's for achieving first place in Micro at the 2021 Junior All-American Football Southern California Cheer Competition held on what day? November 7th, 2021. Congratulations on your achievement, and then it's presented this day, signed by the council. So if I could get the coaches to come forward and help us. And council members, if you would come up front as well.
So we have Desiree Cleveland.
Aubrey. Next, we have Alana.
Brielle Escaval.
Next, we have Miki Diaz.
Nina Montez.
Up next, we have Chloe Contreras.
Then next for our mascots, we have Sarah Rinalis.
Next for our junior peewee, we have Daria Hardford.
Our next mascot is Alana Pam.
Next for junior peewee is Mariah Evans.
Next for our mascots is Avery Villanueva.
Next for junior peewee, we have Serenity Delarosa.
Next for mascots is Tania Land.
Next for junior peewee, we have Aubriana Lopez.
And then, last for our mascots is Marley Woods.
And then, last for junior peewee, we have our trainer, Mia Rodriguez. That's it?
Oh, those are going to go home? Thank you. We have one more group. Congratulations to you. Thank you for being here and letting us help you celebrate. Oh, thank you so much for coming and letting us celebrate. All right, is our second group here?
Yes, Madam Mayor, her being brought.
Okay. So in our last group, we recognized the Lady Titans Mascots and the Junior Peewee Cheer. This group of young ladies is the Ladies Titans Midgets and the Lady Titans Junior Micro and the Lady Titans Micro. If Coach Diaz and Coach Estrada, Coach Lewis, and Coach Serrano are here, would you please come to the lectern? Thank you. We would like you to tell us about these Lady Titans and their accomplishments. And then, once we understand the work that they've put in, we're going to, I'm going to ask you to come forward and help me call them up for their certificates and their lapel pins. So which one of you would like to speak to us tonight?
Okay, I guess I'll take the honor. It was a very stressful season, you know, all the COVID precautions that we had to take. But each day, the girls came to practice, and they came ready to work and learn new materials. And we had a season where we didn't know if girls could come because of COVID quarantines. But even though that was a part of our season, a lot of the girls still showed up and ready to work when they did miss practice. So I'm really proud of the girls for putting so much effort into this season. Because without all the effort they put in, like, we wouldn't have made, we wouldn't have gotten first, second, and third with all the effort that they put in. So I'm really proud of you, girls. Good job, ladies.
All right, now, if, coaches, if you would come up here. We're going to ask your help in calling Lady Titans forward. We will, you'll present them with the certificate. We'll give them a pin, and we'll each give them a fist bump.
And then, we'll take pictures. All right, so Lady Titans, come down to get your certificate. If you'll walk along here. Down this way and end up in front of the screen there, and that's where we'll take a picture of. First, I have Jolene.
Jolene.
Come on, Jo. I have Delilah, who is not in attendance today. Carissa, who also isn't in attendance. Amila. I have Michaela. Fenaya. Zoe, who couldn't make it as well. Armani, she's not here as well. Brooklyn. There you go, Miss Brooklyn. And Emma, who's also not here today. And then, myself.
Okay, I'm going to be presenting for Micro. And I don't see my girls here, so I will continue to read out their names unless they pop out. Taylor Marshall. Kendall Napper. Serenity Perez. Selena Romero. And myself, Liz Serrano, the coach. Thank you. Okay, so next, I will be presenting for the midgets. I have L'Oreal Arroyo here today. Brooklyn Duran. Angelica Lopez. Nevea Harrison wasn't here as well tonight. Isabella Escaval. Coach Alyssa Diaz. And then, myself.
Congratulations to you all for your hard work paying off, and thank you for being here tonight to celebrate with us. We really appreciate it. Back to our agenda. We're at the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They are acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. However, any City Council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. And Agenda Item C6 is a City Council and Housing Authority item. And therefore, we will vote on that item both as the City Council and the Housing Authority. So I'll ask at this time, are there any items or requests for items to be removed for discussion? Councilmember Allen?
Mayor, I'd like to pull C8 and C10.
And Councilmember Wilson?
Good enough.
Those are your two as well. Okay. So we're looking at Items 1 through 7, and Item 9 is the balance of the consent calendar. Do I have a motion for the balance?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion for the balance.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion for Items 1 through 7 and 9 by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Wilson. May I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles? Mayor McNebo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So we'll take Item 6 as the Housing Successor Agency. We just voted on it as a council, so do I have a motion by a successor agent or Housing Authority Board Member? Board Member Robles, is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
Board Member Allen, may we have roll call vote on Item 6 for the Housing, or excuse me, yeah, for the Housing Authority?
Board Member Allen?
Yes.
Board Member Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Robles?
Yes.
Chair McNebo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, so we'll put our council member hats back on, and we will move to Item 8. Approval of an agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and Clean Street LLC for street sweeping services. And we would like to have a brief staff report and a discussion on that item.
So in February of 2019, the city entered into agreement with Clean Streets to do the street sweeping for the city. It was, we went back out for a proposal in November of 2020. Sent that out to multiple companies, 14 different companies, and only received proposals back by the deadline of December 14th from one company, the Clean Streets. So they're the only responsive bidder for the job. And we are recommending that we award this to Clean Streets for the three-year proposal with the intention that, I know there's been some feedback that we really need to be very careful with the quality of their service and the delivery of their service, that staff will follow up and make sure that we are getting what we're paying for. And that should that not be the case, then we will open this up again and look for somebody else.
Okay, thank you. Questions of staff? We'll go with Councilmember Allen and then Councilmember Wilson.
So I'd like, thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'd like to ask you how long, if we do a three-year contract and then we're not satisfied with them, you know, a year down the road, are we, can we just break that contract like that and say, you know, or put something like that and put it out for bid to another, you know, and get a new bid and a new contract, mid-contract with them?
We can't break it just like that, however, we do have to, there is abilities for us to terminate the contract with notice. And we would then do that for failure for them to perform or failure for them to perform to adequate standards. And then, we would then put that out to bid again.
What's the, let me ask you this, is what's the minimum amount of time, or how long does a contract have to be out for bid? What's the timeframe on that? Is that a 60 days or 30 days or 90 that it's required once you post it?
There is no statutory requirement.
Okay.
For something like this, probably 30 days is a reasonable amount. For bidders to put together a proposal, they have to have an understanding of what the scope of the job is and then be able to cost it out appropriately. So somewhere in that range, 30 days.
Why do you think, though, that we sent out 14, you know, contracts and only got one back? Did we, should we have extended the time? And I'm going to ask you, the next question is going to be, what is the, a less than three years but a reasonable amount of time we can do a contract with Clean Street and put this out for bid another time? Can we, you know, can we extend this for, do a one-year contract and let them know we're going to put it out for bid and?
We would have to negotiate that with Clean Streets. I'm assuming that there is a ramp-up cost and an engagement cost that they're trying to spread out over three years. Or if they're open to that, I don't know. We would have to engage them and ask them.
It's pretty obvious, I'm sure it's obvious to you from my line of questioning, that I am not satisfied with their service. And I'm disappointed that we did not get any other companies to at least offer a bid so we can see where we stand with them, you know?
I am disappointed as well. So it is something that we want to look at and certainly hold them to a quality of service. And if we don't get that quality of service, go look for alternatives.
So is this more like, is this, does contract management play into this also? Do we have a hand? Do we need to have a stronger hand in this?
Yeah, we have, I mean, we have the ability to, you know, say they're not providing to our standards and give them notice and then find somebody else. Yes.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Mr. City Attorney?
One clarification on the termination. Under Section 7.7, we have in there the city reserves the right to terminate this contract at any time with or without cause upon written notice to consultant. So we do have that flexibility. You know, if we're unsatisfied, we have that flexibility.
Okay. I know that, the one thing I want to close with is, I want to, on page, one of this, I was also, found it interesting that the alternative of, you know, alternating sides of the street to give residents an opportunity to have cars parked on one side or on the other side, you know, alternate it so that the street sweeper has a, can do the cars. I just don't think that that's something that would work very well. So I don't, I don't think that that's a doable plan for us. But on page 199 of the, packet, page 199, there's the quality assurance from this company. And it says that, that we expect completely clean streets regardless of the number of passes the sweeper must take to accomplish this. So we're gonna watch that. In the upcoming, I encourage everyone to watch that and call if you don't, if it's not clean in front of your house, because we have a lot of, in this city, we have a lot of hills and gullies and things and it just, it accumulates some and it just doesn't get cleaned very well.
Councilmember Wilson?
Mayor, thank you. I really don't have a lot to say in relation to this item. Actually, my item is Number 10. But in particular, I applaud the bid process that we went through. We put it out to a lot of different vendors. And this is a demonstration of the slippery slope that we run into when we, when we have a tendency to just extend contracts. In the past, there's not much we can do about that, but we will be, I'm sure, with our new leadership, we'll see an increase in faith, let's say, on some other contractors. Because once they see that it's kind of a, they've been their guy forever, so why am I bothering to put out a proposal? Proposals cost money, you know? So most businesses are gonna look at that objectively and say, you know what? I don't know if I'm really, you know, spending my time wisely, so we'll have to work our way out of it, I think, probably. And I appreciate the effort that's been done.
All right, thank you. I have a question for staff. From this point forward, what will we do different about giving feedback about the services that they are providing and the quality with which they provide those services? Both good and bad.
So as Councilman Allen pointed out, there are some recurring problematic spots, areas that just don't get hit regularly, or when they do get hit, aren't completely cleaned and require multiple passes. So we'll be following up on those spots to make sure that they are clean. We are asking the residents and the community to speak up if there's issues so that we can take that forward and then we can, you know, set those standards.
How are you asking them to do that? And in what mechanism are they able to reach city staff to get that feedback?
The community? We have the 311 line, they can certainly call on that, leave a message, not the 311, I'm sorry. We have the ability for them to call in, leave a message, like a work order for Public Works. And they're certainly free to call anybody at City Hall and, you know, ask for that to be taken care of. And then we have the ability for them to report problems on the website as well.
Okay. So of all the trouble spots that you know of, would one of those be Barton Road? Because I've noticed that there, it's supposed to be cleaned every Wednesday, and when I walk on the weekends, I notice that there's a lot of buildup of leaves in the gutter, sometimes so bad that it impedes water getting to the storm drain. Makes me wonder why it is that if they're coming every Wednesday, that there would be that much of a buildup of leaves on Barton Road?
We will watch Barton Road.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for staff? Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just want to point out page 183 of the contract. We have a section in there regarding quality control. And we identified five items. I'll just kind of quickly summarize them. Sweeping shall be done in a neat, orderly, and professional manner. The street sweeper shall leave designated areas of sweeping free of dirt, litter, debris, blah, blah, blah. But the key one I wanted to point out is Section 4. The city manager or his or her designee shall be the sole judge of the quality of work. So it's very important that any concerns that the community has, the council has, notify the city manager and staff. And we have this provision built in that he'll be the sole arbiter of whether it's good or bad, and then we can enforce that provision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Mayor, one of the things I noticed about this, under quality control, is that Item 3 is that we're requiring in this that the driver will remove smaller items like tree limbs, rocks, trash, and debris that's in the driver's way from the sweeping path, and it will be removed by the sweeping operator rather than going around it, I'm quoting. Yet, there's not a word in there about trash cans. And you'll notice that whenever, many times whenever, on holidays especially, our trash pickup will be postponed a day. And then it'll coincide with the sweeping day. And they will not move those trash cans, they will go around them. Now, with that said, it would be, they wouldn't get anything done because they'd have to move every one of them. So I just noticed that. That's all.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? All right, is there any member of the public that'd like to speak on this item? Bobby Forbes?
Good evening, thank you. I apologize, I was delayed. There was a car accident on Barton Road, so I was behind that traffic. I missed the very beginning of this segment. Is this the same company that's gonna be rehired that you've had?
This is the same company that we have right now. And the option before us is whether we'll extend their contract.
Please don't. They're terrible. They miss half the town, they miss the streets, they come through my neighborhood, they bring in more dirt than what I have already in my neighborhood. I understand, that was kind of a quick response, but that's how I feel about them. I follow them around, we get posts, hi, I'm Bobby Forbes, hello. And they, the people post on Facebook, and we all in this room try to get them to call City Hall, but they're not gonna, they post on Facebook, 92313. And so it's, sometimes ignorance is something that people don't know what to do, so we try to educate the people. Ignorance might not be the work, but they don't know where to go. And most of the time when they call City Hall, they get no response for a long time, not just recently. And so it's very frustrating to hear people talk about the inconvenience of street sweeping. They don't understand why they have to have it, why the city has to pay for it. I personally understand it, and I think it's necessary, but they do such a bad job, and they don't get out of their vehicle ever, that I've seen. And I have followed them just like code enforcement does. And it's just not fair to our community to have to pay the money to this particular company if they're not gonna clean up their act. I appreciate that you have within your contract that you can can them at any time with a reasonable notice that you have in your contract, but I would hope that there's someone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Any other requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for the, further deliberation and consideration of a motion. Councilmember Allen?
So back to my, I had a question earlier about, is three years the standard amount of time? Should we go with three years? Can we, what would be required to make it a shorter contract? Like a two-year or a one-year? You'd have to renegotiate?
You could give us direction to work with them on a one-year with the authorization to approve a one-year contract or a three-year, you can give us, or a three-year contract or tell us only approve a one-year. It's up to you.
How much time, my concern is how much time is left on the contract we have?
It will, actually, it will run out before this one starts. We'll go without street sweeping for one, one cycle.
Ah, I see.
Any further comments? What shall we do with this? All right, if we don't have a motion, I guess we don't have an agreement. And we will go without street sweeping until somebody else wants to bid, it sounds like. What kind of jeopardy does that put us in with the state as far as our compliance with street sweeping? Mr. City Attorney?
I'm thinking that there may be some water quality management issues.
Yes, NPDs.
As far as, you know, what runoff and what hits the gutters. I'm, you know, if we're, if we don't do this for a month, I don't see any big issues. If we don't do this for six months, there probably are big issues. So there's probably a window that we can get away with. But at some point or another, we do need to address the water quality issues.
Correct. I would agree with that. The other thing to think about is February tends to be a rainy season, so streets tend to get a little bit messier. So if we are, you know, not doing street sweeping, there could be a concern there. The way the contract is set up is it's set to start March 1st. So in theory, if we wanted to get direction and come back at the next meeting, which is February 8th, I think, it's February 8th, we could do that. Of course, I'm not sure if the consultant would be agreeable to that, depending on how much ramp-up time they would need. But again, they're already providing services, so I can't imagine there's gonna be that much ramp-up time.
But we would be open to taking direction to coming back with a one-year agreement.
Yes.
If that's what you're, if that's what you like, and then we can explore other avenues during that timeframe.
Councilmember Wilson?
I'd like to hear the city manager's opinion on what kind of effect might take place if, after this meeting, just basically told the truth to each one of the 14 bidders and let them know that, you know, there was some angst in relation to extending the contract, and if they would like to submit a quick proposal, that it will be duly considered. And, you know, that, that, under the cover, kind of insinuation might, might grab a couple of them. I think, though, that we'll probably see a significant increase from one to the other. So it'll be up to whether we want to, well, I guess, you know, rather than think this out all the way through, that's the direction I would go.
If we go that path, we would need to reject this and then open it up for bid again. That way, we're not bid shopping.
Important, and I think we probably should keep the three-year thing.
Okay. Further deliberation?
There's, Mayor?
Yes.
There's no, is there any type of an extension that we can do with them, like a six-month, one-year, like we just, or is that what we're actually doing right here with a three-year?
That's what we're doing, right?
We're renewing a contract, but I was just talking about extending the one we have for just.
You can give, you can give us direction to go back and negotiate any portion of this, and if the timeframe is something you'd like us to negotiate, we're very open to doing that. You're not gonna get any pushback on, on that. If that's, you're saying, look, go back and give me a, give me a shorter timeframe, we're open to that. And if your answer is, is we just, these guys have burned all their bridges, and go find somebody else, I don't care who and I don't care how much, we're open to that too. So.
What was that? You don't care who and how much? I don't think that would come from this dais here.
I don't care, but if that's, we're, if, you know, I'm still figuring out the lay of the land, and if these guys, over the course of their history here, have been really that poor in performance, that any bid from them is unacceptable.
Well, especially one that wants to automatically increase every year. I'm not, I'm not particularly fond of that provision of this contract.
So how about if we pull this from a staff level? We'll take it back, we'll see what we can get, and for a one-year with them, that gives us a chance then to put this out to a true competitive bid and get some of the other, the other players involved in this.
I would support that.
Councilmember Wilson? All right. Is there a motion?
How would we put that, that into a motion? Mr. City Attorney?
Motion would be to direct staff to explore a one-year contract with Clean Street.
And then come back next?
And come back at the February 8th meeting.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to explore options for a one-year contract for the street sweeping services and to report back at the next council meeting. Is that it?
Yes, with a potential contract if available at that point.
And use their judgment to go out and talk to the other bidders and see, you know, test them a little bit, see if they can maybe come up with a couple of competitive bids for us. We get a one-year contract, who cares? Bottom line is, we really want to get some other bidders.
All right, is that, is that a second, Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilmember Allen and a second from Councilmember Wilson for direction to staff. Any further discussion?
I just want you to know, I don't mind paying for the service, I just want clean streets. That's the point, and that's all.
All right, thank you. May we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, with caveat.
Councilmember Robles? Mayor McNabb?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The second consent calendar item is City of Gran Terrace Legislative Platform for Assembly Member Reyes and State Senator Leva to advance in California State Assembly and Senate. If we could have a brief overview, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna give Councilmember Wilson the first opportunity to ask questions of staff on this one.
So every year, we get a request from Assemblymen and State Senators as far as what we feel are important, as far as legislative agenda for them to push, and specifically for items that would require local funding and for the representatives to work on that funding. These are the items that were, have been of a high priority for the last couple of cycles. There's nothing new on here. So if there, if there are additions or deletions, staff is very open to hearing from council on what their feelings are and what we, what we should pursue, or if there's something on here that we should not pursue.
Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. Road and storm drain. Road and storm drain. Road and storm drain. Now, what we have been doing for the last two or three years is we've been kind of back-dooring what the state has found is, you know, comfortable legislation, things that can make people fuzzy and happy. But the bottom line is, is that we need storm drain and we need road. And if we're going to make a fairly decent, fairly healthy project on the west end of our city, actually pencil, we're gonna need some help. And they're gonna need to help us too. So in the going to need to help us, too. So, in the overall, I think we should do an amendment to this thing before it goes to the Assemblymember and the, and Senator Leva. If I remember right, about four years ago, I met with the Assemblymember Reyes and had a specific hour-and-a-half-long conversation about her in relation to roads. And it all had to do, it keyed into several things about logistics. What it appears happens to us, because we happen to be the smallest geographical city and the largest county in the United States, is that everybody dumps their junk on us. When I say junk, I'm talking about traffic. And if we don't believe that, all I have to do is drive down a jarring, you know, teeth-jarring version of Barton Road. And it just, it, it's like this. I don't know if you don't recognize that, but that's the way it is. And we have an awful lot of stuff on the, the south edge of the city that has absolutely no storm drain whatsoever. Now, some of the new developments had to put in some taller curb and so on, but, you know, we've got a huge deficit we're looking at because unfortunately, the, the point was not made back in the days when we had RDA money, and it would have been appropriate, especially on the roads. But anytime you go in and you open up a storm drain and try to thread it through a bunch of water services and sewer services and, and utility crossings, what you end up doing is you end up grinding all the old road out and basically starting a new one, which means it's about twice the cost of the storm drain. So, I would, I would like to see an item added to this, and I thought we did this last time, but apparently we didn't, and this doesn't surprise me, that we have to show our priorities, and our priorities are some hard improvements. You know, the Blue Mountain Trail is a nice accoutrement, but it is not a priority when it comes to what we have to do to make sure that our people can get up and down their streets. Right now, if it rains pretty good and hard, there are areas in the south end of town that you can't drive through, you can't get a dry lane out of, despite the fact you've got eight-to-10-inch-high curb. That's not good engineering. So, I, I'd like to see something added to this before it goes over to them so that we can get, we'll have our backup when we need it. So, we sit down with these folks and go, hey, you're our representative. We need this.
Councilmember, on page 291, there is the stormwater infrastructure, but this is talking about recharging groundwater. So, is that one that you would like to add to? Or do you want a, a whole separate one that addresses the stormwater and the roads?
I think personally, I think it, it probably would be best, the roads is the, is the focal point, and then the storm drain is an ancillary to that, because you can't build the roads without having the storm drain and take the water off the roads. The roads will just go to pot, and that's what we've seen over time.
So, would you want to take?
So, it's nice to recharge the groundwater, but that's not the angle we need to come from.
Right. So, so add the roads to that particular one that talks about stormwater.
Yeah, I don't want to add to do it. I want to add it to the whole thing.
You want a whole separate one?
In other words, it should be a separate category.
Okay. Any further questions for staff on this? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I asked for it to be pulled is I just felt like the item, this particular item and this subject hasn't been discussed by us in some time. And some of those, like, like Councilmember Wilson pointed out, some of these priorities are not priorities for us anymore. Urban farming, you know, or is that really high up on our list still to have an urban farm? And we got our internet connectivity now in Rollins Park, I believe, and down at Veterans Park. So, at least I see on the check register we're paying for it. So, we have that. So, maybe we need to take a look at these priorities, drop what we don't need as a priority anymore, maybe rename those and add things we do, like he did, absolutely, roads and storm drains, roads and storm drains, roads and storm drains, and more roads and storm drains. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just add to that, that I think it's still important that we look at the Mount Vernon slope as a, as something that we are concerned about fixing.
Mayor, on that note, I was just wondering, was that road ever permitted? Or was it, did it start out as like a donkey trail 100 years ago and just grew from that?
Oh, and we just poured asphalt over it? I have no idea. I think that might come as part of the whole package. Any questions for staff at this time? I know we've all made statements. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So, we'll bring it back to council for further deliberation and consideration of a motion or direction to staff. Councilmember Allen?
So, for us to, we, I think we need to have an agenda item where we discuss our legislative priorities. Is there a deadline to have this turned in to her, to them? I'm sorry, to them?
They're looking for this on February 3rd.
On February 3rd, hmm.
But we, we would be very open to, and I think I'm hearing very loud and clear that there's at least two separate requests, one for roads and one for storm drains, and perhaps one more for roads and storm drains again. But I, I think I'm hearing that very clearly, that when this gets submitted, that is something that we need to, to add to.
Okay. Does that, then, would you come back at the next council meeting with an updated version of this that had replaced things like we discussed here, for example, that we are not, not high on our priority, like urban farming, and you'd replace that with roads?
Sure, we can, we can give you an update on what was specifically the language and the item that was submitted, with the understanding that we'll remove urban farming and make sure that there's, you know, a, a bigger focus on infrastructure.
Well, we'd have to agree to this.
Exactly. That's what I'm, that's what I'm hoping for.
So, I'm not interested in removing urban farming.
Is a discussion.
Hmm.
So, the, because I wouldn't want the legislative offices to do work upon items that we really don't need if we're not, you know, just because we don't, haven't discussed it and updated it.
Councilmember Robles?
I think what we just need to do is amend it. Because, and then really, you're looking at, you're, these two legislators are going to be gone in a few months. So, you know, we just need to gut and amend. But I really think we're, we're okay. I think just the road stuff is what needs some emphasis and maybe move that to, to one, and I think we're good to go. And then we can revisit this down the road for the next year.
Councilmember Wilson, did you have something you wanted to add?
If tonight, we give direction that, that we add a section about the road, as we talked about, as a placeholder, is there any reason why this couldn't be then polled among the council? And does this have to be a new public hearing necessarily before it goes over to the, to the legislators?
No. If you guys give direction tonight, staff would just make the revisions.
And away we go.
Send it off because it's due February 3rd.
So, it would not come back? It would just be sent to the council, and the council members would get back to staff and say?
No. So, we would take that final action tonight in terms of direction to staff. Staff would send out the letter by February 3rd. At our February 8th meeting, we could bring it back to show you what staff sent out in accordance with the council's direction.
Okay, Mayor. I think the way we can approach this is by giving direction that we should put an emphasis on our need, which is obvious, to roads and accompanying facilities, and then let the, the staff in their wisdom build up the case behind it. And that should take care of it.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
I would second it.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Wilson, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any further discussion? All right, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving into public comment for items not on the agenda, do we have requests to speak on this? Okay. So, this, this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. And because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda. But may briefly respond to statement made or ask a question for clarification. Also, items may have a brief response from staff to questions raised during the public comment, and items may come back agendized for a future meeting. Thank you. Ms. Bobby Forbes?
Thank you. So, I've been attending the City of Colton Planning Commission meetings and the council meeting, and they have approved a huge warehouse to go on Barton Road in place of what was called Stated Brothers Warehouse, is currently Lineage Warehouse. They're talking about 600 trucks a day is the number that I first heard when I went to the first planning commission meeting. Their planning commission meeting approved it. City Council approved it last week. Suchill wants no trucks in Colton, basically. He wants them all to come to our roundabout and then go over to this logistics center on Barton Road at Lakkadina. The City of Colton is going to get $10 million from the developer to repair, replace a new bridge at Lakkadina and Barton Road. There's no scheduled start date, finish date, project date for this bridge. And if they don't do it, most definitely all those trucks are going to continue to come from our roundabout. And if they don't do it, the $10 million goes into the Colton, I believe they're called, general fund. And then they get to do whatever they want with their $10 million. And so, most of you know that I live west of the freeway. We deal with trucks in our neighborhood every day. Tonight, just before I came, I had a neighbor call and say, Bobby, what's going on down by the railroad bridge? And I don't know, I'm on my way to city council meeting. And there's cops and people and all kinds of activity down there tonight. The sheriff will probably find out later. This is kind of scary. Jeffrey McConnell told us about this a year and a half ago, I believe, when the first negotiation started on that warehouse that it was going to sell. Nobody really paid attention to him, and here it is. Now it's going to happen. This is 300 feet from my house where they're going to do this building. They're going to take down the existing and put up brand-new that is just incredibly big, probably five or six times what just got built on Lakkadina, of the, the bigger of the two that are on Lakkadina. And I don't even think they're operating yet. And if Colton doesn't want trucks in Colton, then they should not build in Colton for the trucks to come there. This is going to be a problem for our roundabout. I come through there sometimes 10 times a day, and it's an issue for the traffic and for the people that live here. So many close calls. I just want the city to pay attention and voice something to the City of Colton regarding this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Any other requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So, I'll close public comment, come back to our agenda. We have no public hearings tonight. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. And the first is item 11 on our agenda, consideration and possible action to adopt an urgency ordinance, establishing objective standards for implementation of Senate Bill Number Nine pertaining to urban lot splits and two-unit developments. Mr. City Attorney, Adrian Guerra, please.
I believe Heidi Aguirre is going to be giving the presentation today.
Oh, no, it says you. Sorry. You, no kidding. Ms. Aguirre, please, please give us a staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Proterm, and members of the council. My name is Heidi Aguirre. I'm the Associate Planner for the City of Grand Terrace. This presentation is to adopt the Urgency Ordinance to establish objective standards for implementation of Senate Bill Nine pertaining to urban lot splits and two-unit developments, and also to initiate regular code amendment proceedings of Title 17 subdivision and Title 18 zoning regulations for the urban lot splits and two-unit developments, and also to revise the city's accessory dwelling units regulations. These items support our 2030 Vision Statement Goal Number Three, to promote economic development by updating zoning and development code in preparation to future development, and also to preserve and protect our community and its exceptional quality of life through thoughtful planning. Senate Bill Number Nine was signed on September 16, 2021 by Governor Newsom. This legislation is intended to expand housing production in California. It is meant to streamline the process for cities to allow multifamily housing in areas that are zoned, single-family residential zoning, and the objective is to increase residential density to ease California's housing shortage. This bill became effective on January 1, 2022. For projects that meet SB9 criteria, local agencies are required to allow ministerial approval, that means without discretionary review and without a public hearing. So, this would be applicable on developments that are proposing to construct a two-primary dwelling units per parcel in a zone that is designated single-family residential zoning. This bill also requires ministerial approval for projects that are proposing a two-lot subdivision, also in single-family residential zoning, and it's going to allow to construct up to two units to be constructed on each resulting parcel. However, SB9 does give the city authorization to impose objective zoning standards, objective subdivision standards, and objective design standards so that we can establish, you know, these standards as long as they do not conflict with state law. This bill does have the potential to dramatically increase the density in our city. It's going to increase the population on our single-family residential zoning, potentially placing a strain in our public resources and our infrastructure that serves the zoning districts. Given that the Senate Bill just became effective on January 1st, it is necessary for the city to establish these subjective standards to govern over SB9 units and lot splits to ensure that such regulations take effect immediately and to protect the welfare of the City of Grand Terrace. So, where are the SB9 projects permitted? Lots must be located within a city in an urbanized area or urbanized cluster, and the lots must be located within a single-family residential zone. For the City of Grand Terrace, our single-family residential zones include the RH Hillside Residential, R1-20 Very Low Density Single Family Residential, R1-10 Low Density Single Family Residential, and our R1-7.2 Single Family Residential Zoning. Here's the Grand Terrace zoning map. On the legend to, to the right, you can see the first four listed designations are our single-family residential zones. The law does identify a number of areas where these projects from SB9 will not be permitted. They will be prohibited on parcels that are located within a historic district. The law also identifies sensitive areas designated by the federal or state government where these projects are also not going to be permitted, and that includes earthquake fault zones, wetlands, high-fire severity zones, hazardous waste sites, flood plain hazard areas, parcels located on protected farmland, land designated as habitat for protected species, and also land under a conservation easement. SB9 has certain rental restrictions. So, the law requires that units built under SB9 cannot involve the demolition or alteration of the following housing types: houses that are deed restricted, houses that are subject to rent control, and houses that have been occupied by a tenant within the last three years. For the second units and the two-unit development, this proposed urgency ordinance would include the following requirements: Units developed under SB9 cannot be larger than 800 square feet in size, cannot be taller than 16 feet in height, only a maximum of one off-street parking space per unit is going to be required unless the unit is located within half a mile walking distance from a high-quality transit corridor or a major transit stop. or a major transit stop. No setback beyond the setback of an existing structure is required for a unit constructed in the same location and to the same dimensions as an existing structure. However, in all other circumstances, second units and both units of a two-development must have a rear and side setback of a minimum of four feet minimum. Units developed under SB Nine also cannot be used as short-term rental. They cannot be rented by less than 31 days. Units may only be rented for low-income households at an affordable rent for a minimum of 55 years. An inspection to the existing sewer lines or septic tanks is going to be required to ensure that there is an adequate capacity for all the proposed units. Except that specifically stated in the ordinance, the standards are going to be applicable unless they are going to physically prevent the construction of up to two units that are 800 square feet. For urban lot split subdivision, this urgency ordinance is going to include the following requirements: Lots shall be a minimum of 1,200 square feet each. Neither resulting parcel shall be smaller than 40% of the lot area of the original parcel size prior to the subdivision. This is going to ensure that parcels are approximately equal in size, and in addition, if a lot has been subdivided via SB Nine, it cannot be further subdivided. No more than two units are permitted on each parcel that is created by a lot split, including accessory dwelling units. And an urban lot split parcel must have at least one existing residence. That means that this lot split will not be permitted on parcels that are vacant, and residential uses are only permitted on these zonings. In addition, the easements must be dedicated for the provisions of public services and facilities, and each resulting parcel must have access to or adjoining to the public right-of-way. The owner of the parcel being subdivided must sign an affidavit. They have to state that it is their intention to leave in one of the resulting parcels as their main residence for at least three years, and this starts on the date that the lot split was approved. Urban lot splits must comply with all other requirements for lot split under our municipal code unless they conflict the specific requirements in this ordinance. There's a limited ability to reject a project, so the city may deny a proposed SB Nine project development for two lot split if the building official makes a written finding based on evidence that the proposed project would have specific adverse impact upon the health and safety or the physical environment, and for which there's no feasible method to mitigate or avoid this specific adverse impact. The adoption of this urgency ordinance has no fiscal impact. The cost to administer the ordinance will be recovered partially through our application fees. The adoption of this urgency ordinance is not a project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act Sections 65852.21-J and 66411.7-N, and therefore, this adoption does not require any CEQA environmental review. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the ordinance entitled "An Urgency Ordinance" of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, establishing regulations for urban lot splits and two-unit developments in accordance with Senate Bill Nine, waive further reading and introduce the ordinance on a roll call vote, and also to initiate code amendment proceedings to amend Title 17 subdivision and Title 18 zoning of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, so that we can establish the regulations for these urban lot splits and the two-unit developments, and also initiate a proceeding so we can also revise the city's regulations for accessory dwelling units that would be on Chapter 18.69. This concludes this presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Aguirre. We have questions for staff? Questions, please. Councilmember Allen.
Excuse me. My question is about the setbacks. I recently, do we have any control over those four-foot sides and rear setbacks?
The law requires that we, actually, the city is required to allow these units to be constructed with a minimum setback of four feet and a minimum rear side setback, also of four feet. Currently, our municipal code requires a separation setback between what would be main primarily residence with an accessory dwelling unit of 15 feet. We will continue to ask for that setback, but we have limitations. We can't require those setbacks unless we are, you know, restricting the construction of a unit that is 800 square feet. So if they meet all the state requirements, we are required to approve it with a minimum setbacks that the state has indicated.
So I recently learned something about those setbacks, and maybe the fire chief there can mention this, but the angle of a ladder, four feet doesn't give a base of a ladder far enough away from a building when you put the ladder against it to make a safe decline for a firefighter. Something, I learned something like that, that it requires more space away from the building to get a steeper, greater angle. And so there's a safety issue there, and I just was surprised that the state allowed that.
I believe through the building code, and we have our building official here, the minimum setback would be three feet distance, and so they're giving us a four-feet requirement from state, so I think they have addressed that.
Okay.
All right, further questions of staff? Councilmember Wilson.
In your opinion, Heidi, what do you think this will do for the quality of life for the existing homeowners?
This is going to really impact our single-family residential zoning. It seems that this would be the end of a single-family residential zone, because now we are being forced to turn our single-family residential almost into multifamily. So we're allowing multifamily subdivision on what we would have our single-family residential zone. It would impact the traffic, the level of population in our community. It will impact the public services that we provide, that would be fire and sheriff as well. There will be a negative impact. So we want to impose these standards. That's why it's an urgency amendment, so that we can establish some restrictions. One of the requirements is that under SB Nine, the residential units cannot be greater than 800 square feet, and also they have to be utilized for low-income rental. So we're hoping that with those standards, it's going to discourage people from building these units.
How does this affect the minimum amount of open space on a single-family lot, say, for a 7,200-square-foot lot? In other words, coverage?
Right. The coverage is something we can look into as we come back through the regular amendment process, but it is going to reduce it. The minimum lot size requirement now for these splits will be a minimum of 1,200 square feet lot. That's a very small, or smaller one for our single-family residential, like you mentioned, is 7,200 square feet. That's our minimum lot size on our smaller single-family residential. That's the biggest, the smallest one. So once we split that, the requirement also is that somebody who wants to split, let's say, that smaller residential unit of 7,200 square feet, they can only subdivide to a 40% ratio, so they can do 40/60, so it remains similar in size, or 50/50. Those would be the only options.
What about the sewer and water services? In the past, when a unit was on a lot large enough to be able to accommodate a second unit, there was a question of whether or not the sewer had to be a separate sewer or a separate water service. In addition, there's going to be a parking circumstance? You're going to have to have enough parking? And what about our covered garage circumstance? I mean, I see this as a catastrophic mistake. I see this as the metropolitan areas. Now, this was brought up in a meeting a long time ago, a couple, three years ago at least, and what was predominant in the discussion was that none of the people that had skin in the game were in the discussion. It was a legislature, architect, structural engineer-type of discussion, but none of the people that were actually doing multifamily or higher-density units were involved in this. Basically, I see it as a city of Los Angeles spread out into the area where people wanted to be able to live in a larger area. Now they're being forced to accommodate the same circumstance that we have in terrible areas of San Bernardino. Have you ever driven up and down some of the main streets? There are areas where they've taken garages and made them into single-family residences less than 300 square feet. And even though this is supposed to be, quote, "legal" at 800 square feet, I see this just as a terrible travesty. I'd like to put some stops on it, but at the same time, I can't, I can't support it in any way, this densification. I think it was just an awful thing that went through the legislature because, in the name of affordable housing. So I guess my last question had to do with sewer and water. What will the city require in relation to services to these extended uses?
We have included on our ordinance, under the section for the subdivision, there's going to be a requirement, so that's in Packet Page 309. It's G wastewater. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, we are going to require that the applicant does a video of the sewer lines. We want to make sure that they are adequate to support both units being proposed.
And how will the power situation work?
We did not identify anything in regards to the power at this time. That is usually taking care through the plan checking, review, the building, and safety, but we are able to make that change and include that as part of our regular amendment for this SB Nine ordinance.
Thank you.
So a quick clarification. This is an emergency ordinance to fill that gap that the state law has created, and for us to put the brakes on that at least a little bit until we can develop a full ordinance that will address all of the details on that. We're really trying to just throw the brakes on this for a period of time to give us a chance to develop the full ordinance, and I think Councilmember Wilson has some, you know, some very valid points that we need to look at in that ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Councilmember Robles, you have questions?
Yes. So I was surprised to see the must-rent to a low-income person, because I was wondering, how would you enforce that?
Another requirement is that the applicant is going to have to sign an affidavit that is going to be drafted by our city attorney, where they're going to identify that they're just going to, you know, evade by the SB Nine law. That includes that, keep it to low-income housing. That would be one of the things they would have to do.
Okay, so this is the question part, so when we get to deliberation part, I have some comments.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff? All right, are there any requests to speak on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bobby Forbes?
Thank you. I learned about this at the Colton meeting last month as well. They're going to fight it in every way that they can. They have a lot of open property in big lots in Colton, and they don't want it either. And I don't know if this has been passed in Sacramento. It has already been passed. Somebody just wanted some points. I don't know who this person was that brought this up. As a realtor, I should be getting excited about this, but this is going to stink for our community. I, with ADUs, the City of Grand Terrace just recently said that we could have an ADU that is very restrictive for parking and access and privacy and all this stuff, that it could be owner non-family occupied and be rented out, and they could have a full kitchen now, I think that was the term. This is nuts. I have 28,000-square-foot property. I could fill it full of people if I wanted to. No, thank you. I don't want anybody on my property. I don't want anybody on my neighbors' properties either, because I live in a neighborhood where all the lots are big, like mine. This is crazy. And then what about the rental program? Every one of these units is going to have to go into the rental program and be inspected, and there's going to have to be guidelines, and we have to have four-inch numbers on the building that you won't be able to see from the street for the emergency vehicle or the ambulance. How's the ambulance going to get back there to the person that's too drunk to get up or whatever it happens to be? I apologize for that statement, but how are they going to get to that person that's in the backyard where my dog is in the way, because those people have to walk down a little sidewalk next to my house to get to the building I have in the back of my property for the people? This is absurd, so please do everything that you can to make this so restrictive that it cannot happen in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes.
And I don't know if I should be done or not, but that's all the notes that I have.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation and consideration of a motion. Councilmember Robles, you said that you had some comments to make.
Yeah, on this SB Nine, I don't see where we think that everybody's going to be doing this all of a sudden, but we do have to do some kind of emergency ordinance. You know, I understand the parking situation, because you have one parking spot, and like with the apartment building here next door, everybody has at least two cars, if not three. I'm in a situation with a manufactured home from vacation property, and I think everybody must have five cars. There's no parking anywhere. And so, those are valid concerns. I do think that there's a lot of teeth in here from our ordinance to have some protections. There isn't a whole lot of land. I mean, we've, we're at the point now where we're not even in a position to have that much property developed anymore. There is a lot of property that's huge. I grew up in the typical suburban home where we divided up the yard like everybody else did and just let go to seed the rest of it. And I looked at the overview of this city, and there's a lot of rural-type properties. I think it's a waste. I think there should be some kind of balance between the need for more housing and land that's just sitting there. I just, I'm just not ready to go, oh, the bad people are going to move in, because I don't understand how we can all jump up and clap when Habitat to Humanity comes here. What's the difference? We're building a house for people who need it, who are low-income, and their standards. I'm disappointed that in other cities, they're helping people do ADUs. You know, I have a 10,000-square-foot lot. You know, I have 10 grandchildren, and I see them struggling with their wages and what they can afford. We had a report that just went to our consent calendar. Some people, they could afford a rent of $686. Well, you know, my question was, why aren't we exploring more? Who are those people? Are they living in a household where if they had an ADU, they could pay their family, their parents, that kind of rent? You know, there's a lot of people that need a unit for an aging parent. I think the best we can do until there's a change is try to explore this in the most positive way we can, and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Mr. City Manager, would we be eligible for, or would there be development impact fees on people who want to do this kind of stuff?
Under the emergency ordinance, no.
But we could put it into it, you know, the same way a major development would, of 10 or 12 single-family homes on a, out here off of Van Buren that we did a few years ago, they paid development impact fees. What if somebody...
What if somebody splits their lot in half and does, now there's four units on it where there was one? Is there development impact fees on that?
I know it's being explored. I don't know what the answer is, but the discussion is that ADUs do have an impact on the infrastructure and the development. So there should be, one argument is, is that they should be paying development impact fees associated with that. To do that, we'd have to do, we can't just pick a fee number and assign it to it. There's actually a full fee study that has to be done, and then those fees are determined through that study.
And I know that also if somebody wants to, in our community or in our town, and many others do this, if somebody wants to have a home-based business, then the neighbors have to, they'll get a letter. I've had that, received letters like that from the city, that so-and-so, it's a general contractor out of his home, this and that. And I'll, do you approve? Do you have a problem with it, and what is it? So if somebody wants to split their lot and develop it, could there be that same, like, requirement to send out the letter to the neighbors and say, this is what's proposed for this lot, you know? Like, could they do with a home-based business?
I don't think there's anything that would prohibit us from at least requiring the notification. And it would be just that, a notification. There wouldn't be, since it's a ministerial approval, there's no hearing, there's no ability to challenge that, but you at least know what's going on around you.
So a neighbor wouldn't have any grounds to oppose it, no matter what?
Right. That is correct. Since by state law, it's ministerial, it's just like coming in and getting a building permit to build a block wall or a patio cover. We have to approve it as long as it hits the objective guidelines.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Wilson?
Just real quick, Heidi, you can answer this, I think. Our current interpretation, I believe, is that for the impact fee line is if a improvement is attached to the existing house, then it doesn't end up earning a separate impact fee. But if it's not attached, if it is detached, then it is a separate impact fee, and it's also, at least the current legislation for the city, is the impact fee would be the pass-through at the full rate of whatever a single-family residence is. And I think that's what's discouraged people in the past of putting in, say, a second unit when they had enough room to be able to do such, is because the impact fees were like $15,000 cumulative. And that's pretty, that's pretty rough to, by the time you do that and relocate your power, wowee. Gets way up there. So I think that's it. So I think Jeff's indication about the impact fees is a legitimate one. We definitely need to look at that as, you know, I understand the point of this is to try to do a stopgap, and I think that's important, but I think we ought to be right behind it in relation to what we're going to do with the impact fees. Because as the city manager pointed out, it does have an impact. It has an impact on everything. It has impact on drainage, roads, the whole thing, and parking. Yeah, so we might even have to look at a parking fee, who knows?
SB nine is silent on the impact fees for this, but we know that accessory dwelling units does have access, does have impact fees that are triggered, I believe, for anything that is larger than about 750 square feet. But in a regular house additions or any structure that is going to be over 500 square feet, it does trigger impact fees. Since this SB nine is silent on that, I believe that that 500 square feet in-size requirement may still be applicable. We can look into that.
All right. My comment is parking. Parking, parking, parking. It's very important that if we are splitting lots, that there be adequate parking for those that live in an extra dwelling that is parked or that is built on that lot. And it just seems to me that there's this tendency to underpark, imagining that somebody's going to move into this dwelling and only have one automobile, and that they won't have visitors that will come in automobiles. And even if it is, in our city, close to the bus stop, they're probably still going to have a car that they need to park somewhere. So I would really like to emphasize the need for parking depending on the size of the dwelling unit.
All right.
I believe under SB nine, we're limited to a maximum of one off-street parking space per unit, irrespective of the size.
Okay.
Well, whoever's doing it has to use their garage. I think we're the only ones on our street that can use our garage.
Right. Yeah, I think there needs to be something in there about how they have to park off-street somehow. And there is an ordinance that says if you convert a garage into a living space or an office, you're supposed to build another garage. And I don't think we enforce that. And that's been on the books for a long time, so that might be the way around it. Councilmember Allen.
I'd like to also consider our tree canopy and the loss of any of those trees due to any of that lot splitting or development. I mean, we need our tree canopy, you know, to try to help keep the city cool and all that, but we pay money to take care of it also. And so I think that should be something taken into consideration also, is our large old growth trees we have in our city that we might lose if somebody wants to develop a lot or something.
Do you mean a city tree or a tree on private property?
So I understand a tree on private property belongs to the owner, and the owner can take it down, but I mean...
Well, that's an easement.
We, you know, our tree, the old growth, old tree canopies that we have, the old trees, you know, that have been here all these years, that may be on private property still, don't they require a permit to be taken down?
I know some cities do have a tree removal permit for...
We do not require a permit to remove a tree on private property. However, some cities do have ordinances that require a one-for-one. Redlands, if you remove a tree on private property, you have to replace that tree. And granted, you're, you know, taking down some big canopy tree and replacing with sapling, but at least there is some regeneration of the tree canopy.
That's nuts.
Just one.
All right. So is there a consideration of a motion on this item?
Mayor, I will make a motion on staff's two recommendations. Recommendation one and two. Do you want me to read them? I will. Direct the city attorney to read the title of the ordinance entitled, "An Urgency Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace Establishing Regulations for Urban Lot Splits and Two-Unit Developments in accordance with Senate Bill Nine. Way further reading and introduce the ordinance on a roll call vote and initiate regular code amendment proceedings to amend Title 17 subdivisions and Title 18 zoning of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to establish regulations for urban lot splits and two-unit developments and to revise the city's regulations of accessory dwelling units in Chapter 18.69."
All right. Thank you.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Wilson. Mr. City Attorney, will you read the ordinance by title?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And one note, because this is an urgency ordinance, it requires a four-fifths council vote, and because we only have four council members here today, in order for this to pass, all four of you would have to move to approve it. So just want to note that. So with that, the title of the ordinance is follows, "An Urgency Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace Establishing Regulations for Urban Lot Splits and Two-Unit Developments in accordance with Senate Bill Nine." Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor McInnes.
Ooh, I could just dash this into the ground, couldn't I? Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And Madam Mayor, just one follow-up note. So as part of your motion, staff is actually working on the same ordinance, will incorporate the comments that were raised tonight. We will be taking that ordinance to the planning commission like the normal process, and that will be coming to the city council at a future date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 12, "Approve Amendment Number One to a Professional Services Agreement Between the City of Grand Terrace and Inner West Consulting Group for Building and Public Works Services." Luis Gardia, building official.
There we go. Good evening, Madam Mayor, fellow council members. Luis Gardia, city building official for City of Grand Terrace. So I'm here tonight to present an amendment for our professional services agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and Inner West Consulting Group. Amendment number one. So the amendment supports our 2030 vision goals, specifically item number one, ensure our fiscal viability, so including commit to a balanced budget, identify additional revenue sources, review expenditures and seek savings, explore creative means to provide services, and ensure appropriate cost recovery for services. So some background information, so the city's budget includes a part-time building official in the Planning and Development Services Department, and the city has contracted for building services with code enforcement and maintenance support if needed. On June 13, 2017, the city council approved a contract with Inner West Consulting Group for building and public works, plan checking, and inspection services. On January 9, 2018, and October 22, 2019, the city council amended the contract to revise the scope and compensation of the contract to include the building official in plan checking services not to exceed 16 hours per week. And on September 20 of 2021, the building official position was filled in-house by city staff more recently, so that's yours truly. So most of the services for building and safety have now been transferred over to in-house services, so building inspections, plan checking, all that is done in-house now. So we've been saving pretty much. So the agreement, city has entered into a subsequent agreement with Inner West dated October 13, 2020, for the same services, which provides for initial one-year term with two one-year extensions. So the contract in question expired last year on October 13, 2021. During those months of November and December of 2021 of last year, Inner West Consulting continued to perform building and public works, plan checking services to the city to assist staff with pending projects that were in plan check review prior to the contract expiration. So we did have a couple items, some plan checking items that we did, projects pending, and also, Inner West was also helping in the transfer of the consulting building official to in-house, so they did provide some assistance to us. Recommendation from staff is that staff request that the city council extend the agreement to January 28, 2022, and increase the agreement amount from $117,000 to $122,767.50. So that staff may pay any remaining outstanding invoices for building and public works services provided in November and December of 2021 by Inner West Consulting. Fiscal impact, so of the remaining amount, we need 2,050 of the outstanding invoices has already been budgeted in the 2022 budget, and the remaining $5,767.50 will be coming from the general fund. And that is it for tonight.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, please?
Questions of staff? Councilmember Wilson?
Since it was building and safety and public works, congratulations on building and safety part. What's the game plan for public works?
We brought on an interim city, sorry, an interim city engineer. He started on Monday, a contract through Weldon. He will be working 16 hours, 16 to 20 hours per week, two days a week, primarily focused on the technical work of public works. So he's already dug into our CIP and our street maintenance program. We've missed some years in the past when streets should have been paved, and they haven't. And he is working on that with the goal that we get on track with the street maintenance and street rehabilitation for the years that we missed and begin this program and start working out on a consistent path. With that, then we'll see where we are on this interim basis and probably keep somebody like that around for the technical work. And then the remainder of public works, it's a small enough group as far as parks and whatever that can be done in-house, but there is a technical component that we need a PE to work with us on that.
So we're covered. Thank you.
Further questions? So they didn't provide the work to us out of the kindness of their hearts?
No, unfortunately not, but we do still have a great relationship with them, so in the future, we, hopefully we get very busy soon and our major developments start in Grand Terrace, and, you know, we have a great relationship with those guys.
So you might be back with another suggested contract to provide to us for review?
For additional support, but since now we have in-house, doing everything in-house, for now, there's really no need at the moment.
Okay. All right. See, no more questions. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Bring it back to council for deliberation and consideration of a motion.
Remove the item.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Wilson. Any further discussion? All right, please give us a roll call vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor McInnes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gardia. All right. Item H is request for future agenda items. And so under this section, pursuant to requirements of the Brown Act, no items may be considered other than those listed below, but we will not have in-depth discussion on them either. So Mayor Protem Bill Hussey has one listed, and he says reverse AB nine accessory dwelling units. I'm wondering if he really meant SB nine, and he's referencing Our Neighborhood Voices Initiative. I'm not sure really what he wanted to discuss when this came back. Perhaps it was a support for this, Our Neighborhood Voices Initiative group and their work on this. Does staff have an understanding of what Mayor Protem was wanting to accomplish with this particular topic?
I believe you're correct. It is SB nine. There is a movement and pushed by League of Cities to support the reversal of SB nine, and we will probably be bringing you a letter to support that as well, to submit to the legislature. So I believe that's what he's looking for, and we spent the evening discussing that already, so I think we're all pretty well-versed in what that implies.
So he's asking that this come back as a letter of our support for this reversal?
That, yeah, that he, from what I understand, that he'd like our letter of support to reverse this, to go to the legislature, and that any actions that we can do as a city to explore what those may be to work towards the reversal of that.
Okay. So I will make a motion that we move forward with this. Is there a second?
You bet. I'll second it.
Okay. So that's Councilmember Allen with the second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor McInnes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next item, it's listed as vacant property ordinance review, and this was one that I requested, commercial and residential, but I also, as I stated, the vacant property, I meant properties that have vacant buildings as well. And I believe we have an ordinance that covers this, but if we don't, we should, and if we already have one, I'd like it to come back for review to make sure that it does the things that we intend it to do. And so it's my motion that this come back as a topic of discussion.
Second.
All right. So second by Councilmember Robles. May we have vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor McInnes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item three is another one that I'm requesting. It's for us to revisit our truck route ordinance and to, as we do that, we look at what we can do to address the lost delivery trucks in residential neighborhoods. That was a topic that was brought up today, but I know that not only are we having trucks that are lost, and they're lost in our city, and some of them cause some damage, especially at our major intersection, but also addressing our truck, the trucks that are using Mount Vernon as a truck route when they're not allowed on that slope, but they go there anyway, to the freeway on Ramp and Colton, and then discuss ways to enforce. And so I'm motioning that that come back for a discussion.
Second.
Okay. So second by Councilmember Allen. May we have vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor McInnes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And then the last one that I requested was an enforcement of commercial property maintenance. My walks along Barton Road and other areas, I see a lot of commercial property... commercial property that is really not keeping up the cleanliness of their properties. There's litter, they have dead bushes, so they're not keeping their landscaping up, and many other things that really destroy our major thoroughfares in this city. And it really doesn't, it doesn't give the city a very good appearance when it comes to people coming here to shop. And so I believe we already have a property maintenance ordinance, and, and I would like to have that come back for review, to make sure that it includes what we needed to include and that we have a way to enforce it. So that's...
Second.
Okay. And so Councilmember Robles, second. May we have a vote, please?
Can we have a discussion?
No, it would come back for a discussion.
Okay. Well, the only reason why I ask is, is it possible for us to expand?
What's on, what, what, what existing ordinance, you mean?
Yeah, expand the discussion. In other words, property maintenance, period, not just commercial.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would add residential to the commercial.
Okay. Second concurred.
All right. May we have a roll call vote, then?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor McInnes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So we'll move to council communications. We'll begin with Councilmember Jeff Allen. And if I'm not back in, in the time that you're done, we'll go to Councilmember Doug Wilson, and I'll be right back.
So I know that the, the cheer group left already. I didn't get a chance to say it then, but I want to, the volunteers, I'm so impressed and blown away by the volunteers that step up in our community for our youth and, and for all kinds of events. So thank you to those cheer volunteers, those, who, those coaches and the participants. And not just them, but all the, all those parents and grandparents and people who step up and coach the youth and all the different various things, activities that we have in our city. Thank you so much for that. So today, they had a, a, they called it a road survey crew on the warning sign. AQMD had that stop going on, on Barton Road, and it reminded me of the effort we have. You know, we have the worst air pollution in the entire United States here. And so I was glad to see that, how they are at least trying to do something to keep it somewhat under control. So that's all. And she's not back, so Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you. I don't have a lot necessarily, but I expressed, I, I'd just like to mention that I had expressed this, our new city manager, my concern about the seniors, and the fact that, you know, for the last two years, they are unseen. And one of the reasons why I'm aware of it is because we used to go over and play pool over at the Blue Mountain Senior Center. And it concerns me, we really don't have a way of doing this. I know the sheriffs do have a way, but they have very little funding, very little, very little forces available, and that is welfare visits. And so the city manager, and he may want to weigh in on this, he said that he's kind of coming up with a plan in relation to this. And I, and I think it bears some scrutiny down the line of whether we're best served by our Silverliner as our best option for transportation as well. First, the seniors have been stuck by, you know, in their apartments with very little entertainment, other than the TV, to determine whether or not that, you know, how they're doing. And it makes it difficult, and it makes it difficult for us to determine through the employee that we have. So I, I might think that it's somewhere down the line, it might be a, an item that we would want to address. The other thing is, though, with the transportation, if you watch the Silverliner, or for that matter, the OmniTrans, it is amazing if there's more than one person being transported from one point to the other. And I wish it worked better, but unfortunately, it hasn't ever really seemed to kind of catch on. And the amount of ridership that we get on those kinds of things, I know one of the fellows that used to be very active in the senior center, and of course has since passed away, used to say, you know, you guys ought to look, and he's talking about the city council, guys ought to look at the idea of hiring a taxi rather than doing something like this where it's costing you a set amount all the time, and it's, and it's a fairly substantial amount. So all of that is, is my concern in relation to the, to the seniors in our community. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
For the League of Cities, I got bounced off revenue taxation, and I'm on governance, transparency, and labor relations. We had our first meeting, but it was just introductory in the governor's budget. And just by accident, we had a family member passed away. In looking for the arbitrary, I came across that Gene Carlstrom passed away. So I just want to recognize what importance he was to this community, and my condolences to his family. That's all.
Thank you. All right. And Mayor Protem is not here tonight. I will have more of an update at, at our February meeting. And just to, because Councilmember Robles reminded me, I'd like for us to be able to close next, next meeting in honor of Gene Carlstrom, who served our city and was a wonderful volunteer. And I will end there. City Manager Conrad Bolowich, do you have any communications for us tonight?
A couple of brief things. We handed out COVID tests again today. One, one test per resident, about fifteen hundred of them. They went in about two hours. There's a huge demand for them. So we're, we're glad to be able to partner with the county and be able to get those out in the community where they're used. The other, the other, the other two, Councilman Wilson stole the, stole the wind out of my sails. But we did bring a city engineer on board on a temporary basis, as we discussed. So we'll be able to focus on some of the, the pavement and, and street issues. And then the other one is, we, we've worked with, met with FSA, who runs the senior center, and have offered up our code enforcement officers to assist in meal delivery, to shut in seniors, and also to do welfare checks. So if there are, if FSA knows that there's an issue or there's people that are at risk, we'll be sending our code enforcement people to their homes. The people that are trained to actually do the inspections for the, the, the housing anyway, and they'll be able to see those, those at-risk people. So we're, we're starting to do that. And then the last one is, the reserved parking spot here in front of City Hall is now reserved for Grand Terrace citizens only. So citizens, if you're here conducting business at City Hall, you get front and center parking.
Thank you. I appreciate the update. All right. We will, at this time recess to close session. We have one item to discuss. It's conference with legal counsel, initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine C. We have one case to discuss. And so if you are not with us when we return, our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, February eighth, twenty twenty-two at six P M. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and a request will be processed in accordance with the council procedures. Please keep Mayor Protem in your thoughts, as he's recovering from an illness, and we hope to have him back at our next meeting. So at this time, we are in recess to close session. We will reconvene, open session. Council met in closed session with one item of business, conference with legal counsel, initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine C. We had one case to consider. There were no reportable actions from this, this closed session. And so we will be adjourning. Our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, February eighth, twenty twenty-two at six P M. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and a request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Thank you all for, those of you that, that attended tonight, those of you that were here on Zoom, and thank you for the discussion that we had with the council. We are adjourned.